Things like.
No, my.
Four names.
That's the first of all.
Slow down.
I mean, that's crazy.
I don't.
Don't let the person.
Okay.
And.
For real.
Now.
Well.
Send the mom.
That she.
That's the mom.
He's.
Just the.
So.
Plus.
Oh.
Oh.
We need to start.
We're gonna go with.
Twenty starting four thirty at home like that six.
Twenty.
Six.
Yeah.
Sure.
Which three markers which they want.
Lines. When do you have?
This.
Which.
I'll be getting.
She comes.
I mean.
She's.
That's.
You know.
Yeah.
That's.
Oh. And then you know.
These.
It's behind.
It's already.
Um.
Yeah.
It's not good. Um. Actually.
I think it's.
Now.
Yeah.
You know.
I feel like coming out.
It was great.
I don't think.
Yes.
They said.
Twenty.
It's.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
I don't.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
I was.
I'm still starting here.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone.
Yeah.
I'll see that's probably.
Yeah.
We're.
A lot of people.
You.
It's almost.
Yeah.
By.
Power.
Say.
Yes.
Thanks.
Let's call this meeting.
Order.
Just.
I'd like to.
Where you get.
To the.
Why.
Of the United States.
Where.
And do.
What you stand.
One name in.
Under.
God.
Invisible.
Nothing.
Welcome everybody to the September nineteenth. Start kind of council meeting. We'll run with meetings. Uh. And I ask. Public. Um. We are present for him. I just. Probably Mr. Hands. But I can tell him that he's. Uh. Close by. At the. She would disrupt. Um, just so. We identified who's on the phone. Um, Eric. Eric Stevenson, is that you where it says Eric's iPhone?
That is correct.
Okay. Um. Just before we get started with that, we only have one housekeeping item there I have before me. The minutes on Monday, August fifteenth, twinge's one to two. Um, if anybody would like to make the motion or start some discussion about those.
I'll make the motion. We've proven that such.
We have a. Todd, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from K, is there any further discussion? All of them, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
By. That was regional. Okay. Um. Get trouble. So, how are you guys? Um, I'll just. Uh, we'll start off with Jane Kay. Uh, I will say while those guys are pulling themselves off mute. I did have, uh, some communication with Eric Stevenson and it's pretty exciting. Um. We were told that they figured out that we do have a digital signal that's affecting our, um, system. Uh, Stacy Noonan is present here too, Eric. We, uh, discussed this as well, our communications meeting today. Uh, we're all pretty excited about that. Have you guys found the source yet?
No, we haven't found the source yet, and sometimes that can take time. And I'm gonna, I'll let Jim Bowers kind of explain some of the technical side behind that. Um, so a few things that we did. So last year when we were dealing with this, um, you know, we made some adjustments, um, to the system. And we thought we nipped it in the bud because it went what, like eight months or so? You know, kind of without it. And then when it started rearing its head again, we were like, kind of chasing some stuff around. So we went out, we got what's called a, a spectrum analyzer. Um, and I don't know, you know, you guys may be aware or not, but last winter, um, we worked with Richard and we replaced some, uh, PCs and some consoles, but we also added an addition to the main site. So we can remote in and, and kind of monitor some of the things that are going on, you know? Um, because it's, it's just kind of important to us, obviously, right? So, um, what we did was when we got that spectrum analyzer. And one of our technicians drive over there the other day while it was going on. Um, and Jim Bowers had remoted in, um, and he did find it now. Um, so we saw it, we've got the proof that's there. Now it's just kind of, kind of tracking it down, but I'll let Jim kind of talk about that.
So, yeah, um, we did see the signal. I did a research for legally licensed, uh, co-users for, on that channel. Um, we've eliminated two of them so far. Um. We have to look at South Bend. And there's one up by Merrillville that could be causing the problem. Um. So we still need to investigate those two. But we have, we have eliminated two other, uh, sources of, of the interference. Uh.
So if you think it would be reasonable maybe for you just to touch bases with us and say another month at our next meeting? Or how soon do you think it'll take to?
Um. Yeah, certainly before next month, we'll, we'll, uh, jet an email out to everybody and let them know where we're at. Um. I am working.
Stacy's also the head of our communications committee as well. Uh. I, uh, I, I sit on that, uh, committee too. So, um, she can certainly disseminate it to all the. As, as comes along, so.
Yeah, I'll continue to keep her in the loop, uh, for sure. You, you guys, you two both, um, I'll continue to keep you guys in the loop.
I appreciate it.
You know, um, obviously, you know, continue to, to let us know, you know, or whatever, if, if you're running into anything. Um, and we'll be over there, um, here within the next month or so to, to do the annual preventative maintenance. Um, so we'll be around then. Um, so, um, we'll be, we'll be pretty involved, obviously, because we, now that we know a hundred percent what it is, um, now we just want to figure out a way to get it to go away for you. Because it's gotta be annoying, obviously, so.
Well, I've texted Eric a couple of times on some really painful days because all this monitor for EMA, you know, from time to time as well. So, um, and we had a few bad days, which, you know. We're just all glad that we moved towards something. Brad just came to, you guys know him as well, and, uh. We're, we're happy, uh, happy that we're, you know, hopefully we're gonna see something. But it's, uh. You know, we got a little taste of that in a, in, um. Kind of a disaster scenario of recently where we're site trunking and sure would have been nice to have a much clearer VHS system during that time. So.
Sure.
We'll look forward to, you know, repeated, uh, updates from the guys.
Absolutely.
Was, was there anything else from? For Jane, Kate, besides that? All right, guys, you're welcome to hang on. Um, if not, it's nice talking to you. Hopefully to look forward to seeing you guys are talking to you again soon. Good news.
For sure. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Once again. We have Mrs. McDonald here. This. Oh, also known as Pam. Sure.
Yeah, right.
Now I'm negative. We see that. What do you, what do you?
Well. Yeah, we are. Be the next.
Before.
We're just carrying forward the much discussion.
Marty over here. Um. Building maintenance. Um.
Thank you.
So. So they're negative in health insurance, repair, maintenance, garage and motor, gas, oil, new service contract. And dispatchers, would you already know that the, I mean, the dispatchers?
Dispatchers, I know.
Yes.
We know what's going on. Remember, we.
Which you will have an additional appropriation to approve in October to the dispatchers for thirty ago. Also why the service contract. I don't have the funds. And I went with his debt to save it. So what I would like from the council tonight is I, I would like to do this publication all at once because, you know, it costs money every time we publicize for the additional appropriation. So. I'd like to, for the council to decide on some figures of what I can publish for these negatives. Or otherwise.
They have some person to be public complaining to. He's dead. Please say no.
You think she's.
What does?
Why?
I'm gonna say person texted me.
So what kind of?
Oh, black.
Are you mosey because? I'm.
I don't know what to tell you for repair, maintenance, garage and motor, gas, oil and new service contract. That'd be more for, for health insurance, I already told you that I'm gonna need at least hundred and ten thousand. Uh, service contract, nothing. Yeah. Well, maybe. There's no control on that. People maintenance. And go on things next, I guess.
For break. Oh, I mean, the amount, I mean, I, I meant with Chad on this. Kind of didn't I get to? And it's just. Some of it might get alleviated with some different mechanics of things. And then like the pursuit vehicles when they're, when they have one pursuit, a rake will just get smoked. And then they have a vibration. One of the things Chad was gonna see is since it's, you know, maybe live will be cut sometimes, stuff like that too. Plus he was. So there may be some future relief, but don't know. You know. Fix it right now. I mean, there was some explanation for, you know, some of the overage, but then. Other cases, hopefully we caught up some of the, some of the repairs, hopefully.
Um, yeah, and I did break it down, uh, just by vehicle on how much it costs just to change oil and. So we have enough.
We're good doing.
Um, we go between the pit stop and sideline automotive. Right now it looks like sideline is gonna be more of a better bet because they do the diacs and everything for free.
Oh, really? No, but. That's who, that's who.
Yeah. Yeah.
That makes a big difference. Very hard for the guy, it's just part of it.
I've done.
You haven't got the two new ones yet, right?
We got them.
What are you doing?
They're not, um, wired and. Oh, wait, not parts.
You saw him sitting one. I think I saw him one day sitting in a cross place.
Two, two vehicles.
Two.
Right.
Yeah, I will see. Yeah, the windows. Back in the.
Yep, and then building maintenance we talked about as well. Um, let's.
Yeah, okay. So let's talk about that for just a second. We're, we have other. We got a lot tonight, but I want to take, uh, took a look at the auger and we've done that a few different ways. That design's terrible. Used to have inmates lifting it out of there. Um. Now we're having the sewer company come and pump it out, which is very expensive. Have you had any chances to ask around, like to see what other people might be doing for that? I mean, we thought we would resolve with the grinders and then tell people not to stuff stuff in the toilets. I mean, is there no way to gate that somewhere else? So it doesn't make it to that?
Oh. That was, if you remember when we had our jail committee or whatever. We were supposed to have the month for the bug and monster or whatever they called that. That's cut. That's. Result of it being cut when we was doing new con, new construction. I'm sorry, but it's true.
How much is the month?
Way to go.
Okay.
Remember.
Well, if you remember, we, we paid out of commissary for what we have now. That was. Local Venice, it was well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We paid for that on a concert. Well, we was making payments to it. Um, and it's still.
Let Dave post on that. Or he knows how to run one. Can't just buy a.
You can buy something.
And I'm still.
Let all of them not work.
My opinion, my opinion done is it's, we put Band-Aids on it for seven years, seven and a half years. We need to get the right equipment done with it.
Well. The auger works, it just dumps it in that vat and we have to get it out of the pit.
Right.
That's the hard part. I guess we decided.
It's all real. Don't.
There's nothing that does that, that moves it.
That won't move it.
It stays in the pit.
What I was interested in when I was there is looking for a product like that that can lift it, you know, hopper outside. Like there, like, there's gotta be something. We are. I suggest we look at something.
We're working on it. He's been trying to get a hold of the company.
He isn't, he isn't.
No. Um.
Tony.
Keep the quote on it.
There's gotta be something that's less than.
You know.
Yeah, something. I don't.
Was. Like. Those contracts.
Yeah. Yeah, that should be.
It looks something. They got the brain.
Right, the company that would have it. Couldn't have it.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so a hundred and ten thousand and. You're saying a hundred and ten thousand total?
No. For health insurance.
That's why I said. Now, because I'm looking at an unencumbered balance right now, negative eleven. So you're saying four more months is going to be a hundred and ten thousand dollars for health insurance? Yeah, so.
That's for. Everyone.
No, just that's for everybody in there.
Oh, when, when did we decide about that too? About how we were talking about?
Still.
Everything again, are we still waiting?
Oh. Yes, I'll let you know when I have the whole picture to you, so you can attend.
Tell them that.
With.
Some of the council are starting to party at issues with this.
Yeah. Repair maintenance, you're negative two thousand one eighty-four. How much do you think?
The bureau.
Who knows?
I think.
We have. All of our vehicles are way higher than mine. We have, I think, five hundred minutes more about. Hundred and fifty thousand, I think, you got. Three or four. Um, it's just, these guys put on two, three hundred miles a day.
We don't have anybody drive far away. If it all those guys bought, so. Is that all?
Um, five thousand. For. Next year, I would say probably. I mean, we don't. Right. So I would say. Shoot three thousand. Plus the two thousand money for. For. Maybe fifty, five thousand.
We'll call it.
Okay, five thousand. Um, you're negative forty-six thousand garage and motor. How much do you think they need the rest of the year? I would say.
Hold on, if you buy.
We buy. Right? Negative almost sixteen thousand in gas oil. Did you? Remember this one? No.
You spent sixty and eight months. So that means you're spending seventy-five hundred. Fifty-four, thirty thousand.
You want to make that thirty thousand totals? Or?
Or five.
Or forty-five?
In fifteen, sure. Yeah, forty-five.
And then you don't think you'll need any more for service contract for that? In there, there's. You write it down.
That's.
Don't insert it to. We do the.
Forty-five.
This guy's.
What's going on?
No.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
That's. You can buy any. Right? So.
Where are you gonna get them?
You have two more. Tell me, tell your balances, you have like two point three million dollars in jail seat. Still have the ARPA money. Um, but with the ARPA money, like they have to start paying things out of the ARPA. And I'm still gonna need money, um, appropriated. Into.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah, service time. I would say for right now, the sixty-five. I mean, we can always curb it back. Probably still better to stick.
With. Like you had, yes.
Since we have. Money of cash.
Would. What else? What did you do at the inmate medical? I didn't.
Not, that's not us. That's why I'm asking.
Okay. You guys pay. Yeah. Okay. Well, they're, they're behind it, what's like.
Yeah.
I don't.
What are you pulling?
You'll see that. So. Yes. Oh.
Was that two hundred and seventy thousand?
Is what? That is county general or CD? Okay, so that, um, they don't have any money left in prisoner mills right now, so that it's not negative yet. But they don't have any. Yeah, it's going to be. That's another thing that you.
It's going to be when?
I would say it already. Yeah.
Your season opened up. Run them out.
Um, so on your inmate mill side, um, compared to what we bought last year from US dudes, uh, we're even getting a little bit less, fifteen hundred dollars more. For invoice. And then your goods source, same exact order is almost thirteen hundred dollars more than.
How much is it? A month, a year or?
Like how much? Uh.
Three months.
Then probably fifteen thousand a month. But were you thinking?
So is that something that we get engaged with a bid process? Because that seems my reason.
Yeah. Yeah, she does. She buys only what I'm telling, I mean, she, she agree about all of that.
That's an unreasonable.
So we need, and there are sixty thousand then for that? Fifty.
There was some, what are you thinking we were gonna pay for that?
That, right now, it's not negative. Um, so like I could start taking her invoices out of ARPA that you wanted to do that or do another additional appropriation of CD. Those are really your only two options.
Do we want to take an ARPA?
Well, I mean.
I don't know.
We have a piece of property.
I don't know. Um, like, anything that's, is that bad? You have that idea?
No.
I mean, that's been the sheriff.
No.
You think he's gonna know better than me?
Are you kidding me? I guess.
He's nice to me. He's not like me.
You wanna hear him say no? Can we take it from commissary?
I don't.
Why?
I don't do that.
Let's add a line, let's add a line in CDIT.
How much?
Yeah.
You don't have to make a motion to approve all this now, but at your October hearing or meeting, I need you to remember that you said, yes, I can publish these.
Right.
And you make a motion.
We'll wait till we publish, but we've got to know that. Please, is that you?
Bye, Bill, nice person. Remember that, uh, I will.
Charlie, Charlie, I, you know, I wanna say something too, and I don't wanna upset you guys from the airport board. But really, we'd like for you guys, for your accountant to get things in on time, so that we can have everything synchronized, like. I know it seems kind of petty, but I'm, I'm making that request on behalf of council, like, do you like to have everything on, more on time?
I, what were you referring to?
We're, we're off a month with you guys.
Um, you did not have your budget stuff turned into the DLG, you have any time to have your public hearing back in August? And then your adoption hearing tonight?
Well.
But you're not, I mean, you, you're not late, you're just off center.
Okay, well, you're off tomorrow expectations.
War meets tomorrow, thought the treasure is never. The schedule is.
Thank you.
Coordinated.
We have all of our other.
We just gotta do the. Do the, uh, budget hearings in August, and then the approval, then we do them all at the same time.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all you have to tell us.
It's not difficult. So glad you brought it up, rather have you do that than, than let it sink. If you guys do that, you can all bring your dogs. He's not a tag, he, he's legal.
So, so did you open?
So I need a motion to, well, I wanted to have that.
Okay.
I need a motion to open the public hearing. A motion contains, there are second, second, not, all those in favor? Hearing nothing from the. Public hearing, have a motion from Brad, is there a second? Second from down, all of the favor?
Hi.
Sorry.
Okay. Which is the slide, the copy that needs to be signed? When you do adopt, start down, if you don't mind Brad or whoever's gonna read the motion. I need you to say the fund number and the amount for each of you, including founding general, that's. Yeah, because we have all those funds, all funds, and gadgets for that one. And then there is a.
That's one of the things I was gonna do was tell my.
Okay, on the very back of that, there's all, I also need a motion.
This is not a vacation.
The same amount. Okay, so everybody's clear beside us, because we never, there's a lot. Thanks. Everything going good?
See it a little bit.
What? That wasn't very nice.
Shouldn't.
We won't talk about the. Let's put something in there about not.
Oh, that's separate, that's. Make a motion, we adopt the budget for Stark County General. The amount of seven million, seven hundred fifty seven thousand, two hundred thirty eight dollars, and then just all these on the second page, one by one.
You don't say the fund, the fund number.
Fund nine five zero zero, you know, twenty five thousand, nine five oh one, thirty three thousand, one thirty nine. Nine five oh two, thirty thousand, nine five oh three, ten thousand, nine five oh four, five hundred twenty one thousand, five hundred eighty. Nine five oh five, hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Nine five oh six, fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty one dollars. Nine five oh seven, five thousand dollars, nine five oh eight, fifteen thousand dollars. Nine five oh nine, fourteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, nine five oh nine. Uh, sixty three. Nine five ten, sixty three thousand, five hundred. I'm catching on, as well, nine five eleven, four three five, nine two six. Nine five one two zero. That was the one that I liked, right? Yeah, zero, not like this auditor up here at the top. Nine five one three, forty thousand, three hundred fourteen. Nine five one four, seventeen thousand, one ninety four, nine five one five, zero. Nine five one six, hundred thirty four thousand, one ninety three. Nine five one seven, forty thousand. Nine five one eight, three hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred thirteen. Nine five one nine, three hundred ninety one thousand, one hundred and twenty five. Nine five two zero, zero. Nine five two one, zero. Nine five two two, ninety eight hundred and five dollars. Nine five two three, sixteen thousand, nine five two four, five thousand, nine five two five, one hundred and thirty five thousand. Nine five two six, two hundred and twenty two thousand, eight hundred fifty eight. Nine five two seven, forty thousand. Grand total, two billion, six hundred forty five thousand, eighty dollars.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second. I have a question.
Wow, and there's discussion. Yes.
The, um, the forty thousand for Park Four? Is that money we were giving him? I thought we were not giving.
We took the seat back, that's the regular.
Okay, all right, that's all I want, no.
That, that forty thousand is not for the Park Four, it's for the CBC.
It says Park Four.
That's CBC.
Park Four, four nine two seven.
It's like forty thousand?
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Are you talking about the forty thousand? No, the, that, the Park Four is on top.
Well, that's in the innkeepers, okay. Well, the line got off, I couldn't see that, all right. Okay, well, at least I know you're paying attention.
I already signed.
I, I resend my, my discussion.
Any other discussion? All right, for all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There any opposed?
Make a motion to approve solid, special solid waste management budget. For twenty twenty three, in the amount of three hundred three thousand, seven hundred. Solid waste. I didn't.
And the motions are a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Is there any further discussion?
Okay, North Judson Sandpier School Corporation. Make motion to approve their budget in the amount of thirteen million, two hundred eighty seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. I can't, it's up to you.
That's up to you.
No, no, it's up to you.
Just do it.
Go ahead. Zero zero six one, in the amount of four hundred sixty eight thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars. Zero one eight zero, in the amount of one million, three hundred fifty three thousand, four hundred fifty four dollars. Zero one eight six, in the amount of seventy two thousand, fifty three dollars. Zero, or, I'm sorry, three one zero one, in the amount of seven million, four hundred and forty three thousand, two hundred fifty four dollars. And thirty three hundred, in the amount of four million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, uh. We have a motion to condone briefly, um, is there a second?
When I read that, I make a motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion?
Make a motion, we approve the appropriations reduction resolution from North Judson Sandpier. In zero six one zero rainy day fund, in the amount of four hundred sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
I think, I think K V two.
That's fine. Nobody made the motion.
Alright, she says down, down.
That's easy, Frank. Yours is so much easier than Rachel's. Which is the comment.
Thank you.
Matt's gonna be able to hold you guys too, Travis Sheever's going today, so it sounds like Knox is on board too, I need to get ahold of all of you, but I think we're gonna be close before the end of the year without that. Yeah, perfect, so I think things are really rolling, I'm very excited about doing that extra shooter. Thank you, guys. Um, so as far as, we did the minutes, but as far as additional appropriations, um. I will, was it just Mandy's?
No.
There was a second one. Okay, all this ball, Rachel walking, all this explained, the one for Mandy, we do this every year, it's for her posting, it's five hundred bucks. We already had such a heavy meeting, just moving along, and so she. So that's all we're sticking.
James talking about a resolution, not.
Yeah, res- resolution zero sixteen.
Yes. I'm filling time in while you.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, one that states that means it is gradual upon calendar year twenty twenty two. I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm gonna start on the additional preparation again. Okay, I gave you a copy of all the additional appropriations that I'm gonna talk about, so let's do regular CDIT first.
Eleven twelve.
Yeah, eleven twelve. So, this is for the, when you guys gave TMS raids. That raid was to come out of CDIT, that was done in March of this year. So, I'm estimating, I'm waiting for them to get done this time. Only the first out, only, yeah, just the one. No, they're gonna maybe get ten thousand dollars in their budget that I have to find money for.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So this is for the raise that you guys.
I just. Don't bite my head off. We haven't had more than one to two paramedics in the county in months, and we have. So, there should be four. So where's all the money?
Well, this.
Full-time paramedic.
That nineteen thousand has been going on since March, so we may be spending much less right now in there for the past few months, but. That is what's built up since March. And you're right, because you can see where the full-time staff, that's even teams, so you can see where we spent more.
So why do you think?
It might be, but we don't have to spend it, this is just an additional appropriation.
All right.
You know, it's not.
Or you don't need that today?
I don't need it today, but I do.
Where, where, where are we taking the money from? Auditor budget, okay. We, we already.
We knew we were doing this.
Didn't we already say, didn't they say fifty thousand?
For this, we never established the actual.
That's correct, we estimated about seventy thousand, um, but no, there wasn't a, an exact number.
We use their numbers and estimated seventy thousand, it looks like we're gonna go over by two times.
And we might not.
Looks like to me this whole thing is a trip in the hospital.
Okay, one one three eight, which is, um, impact development, so you're negative. Six thousand, six hundred twenty two dollars right now, because there was a reduction in that appropriation. And, um, we did approve for the sheriff's department to purchase.
The vehicles?
No, it wasn't their vehicles. The air conditioner from there, so if she did get one invoice and it was sixty five hundred, so I'm gonna need. At least this amount plus the, the first invoice for the air conditioner. I, I'm guessing we're gonna have to re-vigil at the CCB fund before the end of the year, but at least I'm gonna get this.
Well, we, we set that up where they, you had to.
The, the six thousand isn't a part of the, this current six thousand is not a part of the air conditioners. She got the invoice today for the air conditioners, I think it's sixty five hundred, so I would need the, that, the air conditioner invoice plus the six thousand, six twenty.
Fifteen thousand, yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand.
Moving on, oh. Okay.
Yeah.
For the. For the one, two, one, seven, the elected official training fund, that money comes solely from the Porter Steens. And this year, we, I estimated five thousand dollars in more elected officials have gone to trainings this year, so I'm just.
Well, you work that one every other week.
I, I'm asking for fifteen hundred dollars. Any questions?
Yeah, lots of them. How many unreligions to that?
That's it, um, I already sent you guys the email about the health department. Um, that, that was money, he's asking for like, like twelve hundred dollars, I think, um, and I already got that one published. He received money from doing all the COVID vaccinations, so he's just asking to use that money that he received, that that money had been approached.
Oh, just uncovered, or it was.
Oh, and then I, I did publish the ARPA, what you guys have spent so far in ARPA, so that's gonna. Um, that'll be, have to be passed in October as well.
She didn't shoot that.
Oh, yeah, we need to do that. Oh, um, but first of all.
Oh, okay, one rules after that.
So the whole rule fund, um. So the home rule fund, um, so the home rule fund, uh, I met with Mary with Rachel and um. So the question is, is they're gonna take in fifteen thousand, my question is, how much they're gonna put towards the attorney and how much they want to put this account? Well, I said, I I did this on behalf of the council, I said, I know you would want to do snow that, because there's gonna be attorney fees too, and obviously those is come out of that fifteen thousand. And then also, um.
Wait, they would love the attorney fees to come out of fifteen.
Sorry, sorry. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think they're paid. So I tried to stay within their budgeted amount, uh, okay, but.
And then also, I I assume we would want to know what they're gonna pay it on, because this can't be paid into. The on uh, say building fund, it has to be, but what can it be spent on, we want to know that too, what are they spending on, what are the options that it can be spent on?
So if you look under purposes, I think, I don't know, the land's on page one or two of that, we're, let's see, uh, so look. Oh. You probably have brand.
It's the right one. It's so much stuff.
I thought it's. Isn't that the? Yeah, it's good things. Yeah, this didn't have the purposes.
Tonight, tonight, what I was gonna recommend, that we make motion to table anyways to answer the questions.
Yeah, there is a.
They want, they want a judgment.
Hey.
On high signing. Right, Justin, they want a judgment on a property.
So, yes, so there was property that had uh. They were building, they didn't apply for variance, they built through the stop order and um. They were denied at the easy level for the variance they requested post stop order. Um, then they appealed it. Started with Mr. Bedrock, I closed out litigation, we negotiated even penalty with this fifteen thousand dollar penalty, which was pretty clever on the property, basically, everything you have to. So that fifteen thousand dollars was for a assessed penalty. They agreed to pay um, or. Not going through the correct procedure, and it was pretty hefty, you know, for good reason, because a lot of, a lot of other properties have done the same thing, so it's not gonna be, it's not first, and it will not be the last one, we've gotta go to that. Um, so we thought it was pertinent to set up fun, so the B Z A into a planning commission to be a little more self sufficient, so they don't have to come to you, but there's any, it kind of like you see tonight with, you know, the other departments. My ideas to get themselves sufficient, they're gonna let me, if I'm gonna be litigating, we're gonna have to negotiate penalty arrangements of those who put to a perpetual home rule fund, that they can use that later, and don't have to approach you guys if they have other expenditures.
But we want to know what the other expenditures would be.
So the way I described it, and I. Wrong, Burton's kind of opposite of three, they were very general, it was uh. Basically, the design implementation enforcement and um, it's line implementation and enforcement of. The current building ordinance and um. Engagement professionals for that purpose, number three for any allowable expense that's approved in B Z A meeting for which expenditure required.
Exactly, ones like that. You know, like any allowable expense to me, you know, on you, and, you know. So, but we don't, I mean, like I said, I was gonna record this table anyways, because I asked Mary to ask the B Z A what those expenses could be. I would rather know specifically, because technically by statute, I believe we receive that in the general, but also, or you don't have. So. Does anybody hear that? We have a motion from Brad, is there a second?
I will second.
So I'll spin it back to your discussions, because I figured if they don't come back with a good answer, then we'll just deny it, and we'll just receive all the money in the general.
That's good, mate.
But I'm also okay if they're gonna explain about some of the. You know, jobs, you know, as an office manager, I don't think. Yeah. And then we have the Peter Bowe appointment, um. Firstly, I went to school in the show, I don't, I don't know of other people.
No one. Make a motion. Why work downs?
So you got a Peter Bowe one. You believe second, we've done, we've got motion, uh, from Brad, second, we're done, all those in favor, I.
Hi. You gotta be certified in.
You got, yeah, there's there's certainly.
I was on it.
We have somebody that's, that's, you don't have one person that's certified.
I was on it for years, yeah, yeah. I make more. Yeah. I I have questions, not probably the right time to ask it, but I'm gonna ask it anyways, since the airport went. Should have asked them when they were here. Where's the um? Where's the sheet, spreadsheet that shows us how much money they bring in here?
They don't have that.
Why not?
Yeah, I can have them present it as adoption hearing. They're officially adopted yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like to see their balance sheet.
Oh, yeah.
All the expenses in. Um, I only had one piece, real quick, I just wanted to say, hello, Tom, I met with his board uh, the other day, the park board, he's uh, on the board. Um, looks like they had a good year, I mean, there were some ups and downs, budget wise, I think they're gonna be okay, we, um, you know, with Rachel also. Um, and you know, hoping for a better year next year. Uh, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I guess I just, since I am new to the park board, my question is really just for me, not to the park board, is I didn't, you know, get a question from you guys. Um. I saw you went from. CEDIT, we did have money this year, and next year, we're not quite, is, is the, is the main reason that you want the park board to be self sufficient and not use any?
The main reason is that started out as seed money, it was never, it was never a a potential that it would go to perpetuity.
Right.
Part of this council and previous councils, I can take, say, a hundred percent of the size of me. Did not want to fund the park board at all, so that was a negotiation between the park board folks at that time, that get a little seed, seed money.
If you're starting.
Get started, so so that is the view, that is, mainly that you want the park board to be completely self sufficient.
With revenue generated by. Mainly, we knew there were gonna be some startup costs. And we knew that there was, you know, gonna be a need for some extra capital and, and the state is out.
Okay.
So, yes, we're, to answer your question.
Thanks, thanks.
Anybody else?
Wouldn't we do about the ambulance?
Ambulance.
Can we do anything about that?
Yeah.
Or was I at? Okay.
The eighteen thousand for a CEDIT?
Yeah, you signed it. Alright, I just missed a little time.
You guys didn't make any motion.
I was just gonna wear.
I know.
Yeah.
I agree.
Scared me for a second, I thought, ambulance is flying, ambulance.
It's a service, I mean, service in general, it's bleeding bad.
We have a motion to adjourn, it's like. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.